Microphone check. Welcome, everyone. Do we have, yes, he's online. Thank you very much. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 202221, and the Federal Americas with Disabilities Act. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the city council meeting by emailing the city clerk, at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us before 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Include the agenda item, number, or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the city council and kept on file as part of the official record of the council meeting. If you aren't counting any difficulties connected to the meeting, please call 209-646-4812 for assistance. And welcome, everyone, to today's special city council meeting, today, May 24, 2022. And now call this meeting to order. May we please have the roll call?
Councilmember District One, James Casey.
Here.
Councilmember District Two is currently vacant. Councilmember District Four, Mike Klein.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brett Silveira.
Here.
We see you. We can't hear you. It's present on Zoom. Mayor Javier Lopez.
Here. Okay, moving right along to Citizens Communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, Dr. Rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution Number 2007-106. Members of the public interested in addressing the city council during the special meeting may address during the excuse me, members of the public interested in addressing the city council during the special meeting may address the meeting in accordance with Government Code, Section 54953. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on the agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber's door. So the way we're going to run today's meeting, I'll go ahead and actually hand it over to Alex, who will explain, and we will begin with new business.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the FY 2223 Budget Workshop. If you could bring up a presentation, please. We do have a presentation for the council and the community. Before I hand it off to the Finance Director, I just want to outline what we're proposing as for the format for the workshop this evening/afternoon, I suppose. So next slide, please. So we're proposing a staff presentation. Then next, we would turn it back to you, the council, for question. Then we recommend soliciting some community/public input on the presentation, offer it back to the council for discussion. Then we can outline what the next steps would be for the consideration and final adoption of the budget. So if there are no other there are no changes to what we're proposing for the workshop and the outline of the workshop, I think we'll launch right into the presentation. Any questions, comments on the format? So no, if no.
Could you go back one page? I'm sorry.
Back one.
Write down those real quick. Go ahead.
Okay, so we'll launch right into the presentation, and I will hand it off to Tisha Diaz, Finance Director.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So I'm going to go over the current fiscal year general fund budget quickly. We have, we had a beginning balance of $7.57 million with projected revenues of $25 million, projected expenditures of $25.6, with an ending fund balance projected at $6.95 million, which is equivalent to 27.1% reserves.
Well, can you slow down? Because I don't have a copy of that, so I can at least write this down, please. Okay.
Okay, so still for the current fiscal year, we have projected revenues are projected to come in slightly above what we budgeted, about $300,000. Projected expenditures are expected to come in as budgeted at $25.6 million. The final draft revenues and expenditures will be available in September, October, when our final sales tax and revenue payments are expected. And we anticipate to use $619,000 of reserves. And once again, reserves will, the percentage will be 27.1%. Of course, actual revenues could come in higher and actual expenditures could come in lower, then the reserve balance will increase. Okay. So for the draft fiscal year budget, 202223, big-picture overview, we have included 1.1 million of ARPA funds in the proposed budget for revenue recovery. One of the eligible uses of the ARPA funding is to replace the lost revenue due to the pandemic, so we've had to utilize that eligible use. Revenues for next year, we have projected to come in slightly above the current year and expenditure forecast. Expenditures are forecasted with an increase also due to the increased cost of goods, the negotiated salary increases, an increase in retirement costs and health insurance costs, and increases in workers' comp and public liability insurance. Those were majoring, the biggest increases that we, that we show for next fiscal year. So a little bit about the budget process. We get the budget process started in February. We start with the Internal Service Funds, calculating those costs, the fixed costs that, that no one really has any control over, the telephone, gas, electricity, or utility costs. And then the departments compile their own budgets. They create their own budgets, and then Finance compiles the document that is then sent to the city manager for review with each department. So then, the city manager, along with the Finance Department and each individual department, meets in April to go over the requests. Then, the first draft that we came up with in April showed a $4 million deficit. So we requested reductions from the departments, and that resulted in what we are presenting to you tonight. The current preliminary draft budget was balanced, again, using 1 million of ARPA funding. The proposed budget does include the first installment of the ARPA funds, which was $5.8 million. And the second installment is expected to be received in July. And again, council is going to determine all, the use of all of the ARPA funding. Any questions so far?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right, so now we have draft revenues for next fiscal year. And these are just some slides of our this first one is the changes in revenue versus expenditures for the last 15 years. So we can see that this, well, the 202223 draft is balanced. The current fiscal year that we are in, we are projected expenditures slightly higher than, than revenues. And last, the 2021 fiscal year, we ended up with revenues higher than expenditures due to the CARES Act. It was mostly due to the CARES Act. The next slide is basically the same thing, changes in revenue expenditures, except salaries are split out. So I don't know. The little blue line is all other expenditures. The line in the middle, which I think is green on that screen, is salaries and benefits, and the lightest line is the revenues. So from this, you can see that for 1819, revenues were higher, and then they declined a little bit, and they're on the rise. Salaries, the same since 1819. They declined a little, and then they have been rising, and I don't know, sorry, that was other expenditures. Salaries are just up and down. Okay. This is the sales tax chart, and it is slight, it's got a slight increase over since, let's see, so the 1819, it's been increasing since then slightly. Not, not as much as it was, but there is slight increases every year for sales tax. And with the develop, new development, we should, we are expecting more in that area. Next, we have the secured property taxes, and that one, again, slight increases of about $100,000 every year, hundred, yeah, $100,000 increase in property taxes every year. And the same with motor vehicle. This slight increases, $200,000 average. And the last graph is our cannabis agreements. In 1819 was the biggest year when we started the cannabis development agreements. And then they've, they were lowered three years later, and now we have $1.3 million of development agreement for the next, I believe, 10 years. So this is other general fund revenue sources and the future. We do contract with Muni Services. They do our forecast for our sales tax revenues. We have future growth coming, both residential and commercial. Whitmore Ranch is being built, the Series Gateway Center, and all the other developments on Service and Mitchell. And then we have unknown expenditures or decreases in revenue regarding inflation or even a possible recession. Okay, so next, we have an overview of the general fund and draft expenditures for fiscal year 202223. Okay, this might be too small for anyone to see.
There is a copy of this in your, in your binder.
I get it right here. Thank you.
All right, so as I, as I mentioned, we project to end this, this current fiscal year with a 27% reserves, $6.9 million of, of ending balance. And then with the revenues for the 202223 fiscal year at 27 million and expenditures at 27 million, we will, we're expected to end the 202223 fiscal year with the same 6.9 balance, 25.6 reserves.
So before we move on, can we go back to the so the, as I mentioned, there is, there is a copy of this in your binders. And do, do want to point out that, you know, I think it's important, and the Finance, Finance Director thinks it's important as well, to, to look at the fiscal condition of the city in, into the future and, and have models like these so we can begin to strategically look at the out ears of what the fiscal condition of the city might be, given our, our revenue and expenditure. The good news is we have ARPA funds to fill our budget shortfall. The bad news is that the use of ARPA funds to fill that shortfall is not sustainable. So we need to be strategic about how we use those ARPA funds. And you'll see the theme, the theme recurring through today that we are proposing to use those ARPA funds to fill that budget for shortfall for the next several years. The good news is revenues are increasing. Revenues are increasing, and that we think we'll be able to, to fill that budget shortfall in a combination of ARPA funds and managing those expenditures closely. So I just wanted to highlight that, this, this table and that for the council.
Can I ask a question, please? It's relating to this right here. You know, when you got to be, excuse me, a beginning balance of 2122 of $7.5 million, then you got revenues of $25 million. When you do the calculations, as far as the expenditures out of the revenues, you, you include the 7.57 million. That gets you your balance of 6955, okay? So how come you don't take the 6955 to get your percentages with the revenues and the carryover together? Because that's one, that's one amount. Because if I take my ending balance of 6.9 million and divide it into the 25 million, I get a 27%, you know, revenue base. But if I add those two together, the, the carryover from the previous year has 32 million, and if I take my 6 million, then if I did this right, and the way I do it is a little different, but it comes out to the same, 6955307, divided by the 32,62801, which is the revenue plus the carryover, that gives me only a 21% reserve.
Because reserves are your ending balance as a percentage of your total expenditures, not your total revenues.
But, but, but what you're doing is you're including the carryover from the previous year when you're, when you're taking out your expenditures. Because if you only take out your total, your revenue, your revenue of 25 million minus the 25667, you'd be running at a deficit. Because if your revenue is only 25 million, and you use your expenditures at 25.6, you're, you're at $600,000 deficit. So you're using the projected with the, the carryover from the previous year to offset your, your expenditures. So you need to add the first two together because you're using that for, for your expenditures. So why wouldn't you use that total to get your reserves?
So you, you're comparing the, the ending cash balance to your total, your beginning balance plus your revenue.
Correct.
Your reserves are calculated as your ending balance. How much do you have? What is the percentage based on your expenditures?
Yeah, but. But.
So it's the 6, 6.9 million divided by the 25667494. And that gives you the.
So that's the way you calculate it out?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how the service is calculated.
Okay.
All right. I think we'll proceed.
All right, this next slide has to do with Measure H. We currently have 12 police officer positions allocated to Measure H along with the City of Modesto Fire Contract costs equivalent to the seven firefighters that we had allocated to it before the contract was signed. There are one-time expenditures of fire apparatus equipment and the loan repayment of the fire apparatus equipment, other tools and equipment, and the license plate readers for the speed trailers, water rescue gear, and portable radios. We did see an increase, or we anticipate an increase in revenues for the next fiscal year in the Measure H Fund. And this is the five-year projection for the Measure H Fund. Their Measure H should be a fund that doesn't have a large reserve. We currently do have a rather large reserve. And so we, we increased the number of personnel in, in the Measure H expenditures. So we will end up with a 19% reserve this year, and then we'll, we will continue to use that so that there is no, there is not a large fund balance in Measure H. So drafted fiscal year 202223 expenditure summary. We have a total, total draft general fund expenditures of 27.1 million. General fund personnel costs are at 56% or 15.1 million. And with Measure H, the total expenditures for Measure H and the general fund are at 33.8. This includes, in Measure, in Measure H, public safety includes PD, fire code enforcement, and animal control, and they make up approximately 81% of the total general fund and Measure H budgets combined. Okay, so now we come to general expenditures fiscal year 202223 discussion items. The second round of ARPA funding, the 5.8 million will be expected in July of 2022. We are requesting a use of 1.1 million of the ARPA funds to fill the that's not right, sorry, that's to fill the 2223 budget shortfall. No new positions were added in the status quo budget using the ARPA funds is what, what is presented. So now we look for council questions, direction, and then our next step is to prepare the budget document and then bring the budget back to council for the June 13 meeting.
How many people do we have on Zoom at the moment? Should take off. Mr. Warren, would you like to make a comment? Do you want to? Being that you are the only person here, I appreciate you coming today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Warren, City of Siri. A suggestion for the group. Obviously, I don't know how many, is there anybody on Zoom? Are there any citizens on Zoom?
There's three folks on Zoom.
Okay, I know Dave Pratt couldn't be here tonight. He planned on being, but he, he said he was still recovering. I don't know quite what that meant, but anyway, thank you for the opportunity. Say a couple things.
Can we raise his mic, please?
I may be speaking a little early, but I know our committee with the veterans have discussed using some ARPA funds in this next round, quite possibly for the upkeep and maintenance of our American Legion, BFW Hall, that belongs to the city, that's a city building. And so I don't know in the maintenance plan or budget, in my quick review of going over 300-plus pages or at the computer the other day, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me that talked about money for upgrades and possible some repairs that might be needed at the facility. I know some of the other city facilities had some upgrades and things with the past ARPA funds that we discussed before. So just something to maybe keep in the back of your mind that the facility probably does need some care. Every time I go by the new well here on Sixth Street by the mansion, got a nice wrought iron fence around it to keep the riffraff out. And I think that might be something that should be considered for that particular facility. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm sorry that more of our citizens don't take an interest. I know a lot of them do compute, commute, and so they're probably busy driving over the ultimate pass while we're enjoying the air-conditioned building of our. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I'm sure there's, there is going to be an opportunity for a second round ARPA fund discussions, so that'd be a great time to bring that up. And we'll actually, Alex, I'm sure he wrote, not a bad idea. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and bring this back for council questions.
Well, I have a lot of questions, but I know that Councilmember Silveira, if he's online, I know he has to be somewhere. I'd, I'd like to give it, let him at least chime in.
Mr. Silveira, do you, do you have the floor?
Yeah, thank you very much. Can you hear me, first of all?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, it's unfortunate that expenses have gone up, but I think that's pretty much happening around the world. We're pretty fortunate to have the opportunity to have ARPA funds available to help us get out of it. We definitely, in the next two years, need to be very budget-conscious on what we do. So when the ARPA funds are gone, our budget's relatively balanced and a lot in this situation again. I'd let through the whole thing, and there's little nothing we can do at this point other than use all the funds to supplement what we are going to have to use for this next year. But that's enough for the negative part. The positive stuff is the overwhelming amount of growth that we have in the city coming in in commercial and retail development that's going to definitely change a lot of these figures, hopefully more than that estimated 5% revenue increase that is listed on all the budget documents. So nothing really more to say other than I support using of our funds to get us through the next year and then really, really taking hard looks in the next two years following to maybe not have to use our funds to help us out and then to get to the point where we're okay without them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Bring this back to Mr. Klein or Mr. Casey. Any questions?
Hey. Couple of questions. I'm looking at the very first page of the budget that I have, 202223 revenue by transfers. On the very top, where's, where's that revenue come from? Where it says revenue by transfer?
Which amount are you speaking of?
Pardon?
Which amount, which amount is that?
Well, it's revenue by transfer is $846,000 right at the very top.
There we go. Okay, sorry. So those are transfer in, transfers in from, from other funds. For instance, the Measure H Fund transfers $152,000, which is half of the loan apparatus payment. There's a transfer from the Measure H to the general fund. That's part of it. And the other one is the $694,000 from the CFD that's transferred over.
Okay. And when it says transfer appropriations for 316, where does that go?
That one is that they're transfers to other funds. I can't off the top of my head remember where they go, though. I'd have to do a little bit of research. I can't, I can't, I can't remember where they go right now.
Okay, well, that answered the, the ones for the next year, too. I see where they're, they're transferring them in from community facility. But the other thing is a transfer appropriations for 320,000. That's what I was looking for, is where those, where those funds are being transferred to. So that would be the same question for the 2122 budget.
Right. Yeah, I can get that answer for you.
Okay. Going inwards is two, couple pages back, revenue projections fiscal year 2223. Utility penalties. I see that, you know, for 2122, the utility penalties are 89,000. Why are you projecting $210,000 for utility?
Well, in 2122, we weren't, we, there was a moratorium on, on utility shut-offs. So we were not allowed to charge the service fee that we charged during shut-offs, so now we can.
And you think it's going to be? And you think it's going to be a lot higher than 19 and, and 20?
Yeah.
Series Fire Protection District. Why would the revenues be about 68 to 71 and then also go to 95,000? Projected?
That, that's the number that the site, the Series Fire Protection gave us is what they're going to send us.
Really? $25,000 increase. I like that.
So do we, council member.
Next page. Equity transfers. What is equity transfers? I mean, in 2018, we were at 2.8 mil. And then it dropped down to like 152,000 and now it's back up to 1.2. It is fund 100.9.150.73.
Yeah, so the 1.2 million, that's the 1.1 from the ARPA funding. The 152,000 from the, the Measure H fund to the general fund for half of the loan apparatus payment.
So that, the equity transfers is from the, up there in front. Where I was asking earlier.
Yes.
Okay. That's with that one too. Now I'm going up to expenditure summary. About five more pages, four more pages. I'm just clarifying this. Department 15 Emergency Services, that's fire.
Yes.
Okay. I just clarification. That's what I, I figured that one was. That one is expenses, expenditures. I'm going to the annual 2223 annual budget and I'm on police services. Okay. Looking on this for personnel services. Line 113 court time. We're not doing any court time. We don't have any projected for court time. I mean, it's dropped off over the course of the years. How do we just, you know, I mean, do we use it as overtime or, or do you line item court time or?
Court time is now being just combined with salaries and wages. We're not separating it out any longer.
You're not separating it out any longer? Okay. Investigative services. You know, I've seen a substantial drop in investigative services. Is there a reason for the drop? Next page over.
Maybe I can differ to the police department.
A lot of the stuff that was in 217 has been moved to 299 contract services and that's the most appropriate place for it to be.
So that's included into another one?
It just got moved to a different line item, 299 contract services.
Then I go to 268, which is fleet allocation. So we're getting a lot of vehicles that are getting up there in age with mileage. We're going to be replacing them next year. That's what I mean, just in general, that's what I'm thinking. Don't we? Don't they trade them out like two or three a year or are we doing a batch in one time?
They do have, I believe, police vehicles do have a life cycle of three years. Plus this includes all the man-hours to repair vehicles also. It's not only replacement, it's operations and maintenance of the repairs.
And then for the, in the same thing, what's contract services for PD?
That would be anything that we contract out for. For instance, let's see.
It's a 36% jump from the previous year for contract services.
So like Rick mentioned, they did move some of the investigative services charges that they were charging there. They moved them down to contract services.
So investigative services go into contract services? Does we contract that out then?
We, we contract with people. So anytime we sign a contract with a consultant, it comes out of contract services. So it may have been coming out of investigative services and shouldn't have been. So they moved it.
I'm trying to figure this out. So we contract our investigative services out?
Yeah, for backgrounds, correct?
They're contracted out.
So in that, okay. So background is part of investigative services.
Are they in 217 or 299?
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand that. 217 says investigative services and that's wrapped off substantially. But then all of a sudden you got contract services went up 36%, which I can understand, you know, you use an F for background checks is by using rank or, or somebody else. But, you know, investigative services, detectives, things like that, or is that completely different? Don't, don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to, I'm trying to understand the budget. I'm not trying to take anything away. I'm just trying to understand the budget.
If I, if I might try. So if you go to your binder, you have the budget, this tab for departments. For the police department, about one, two, three pages. Then you'll see, you'll see a detailed sheet labeled that, that labeled investigative services. Do you see that, council member?
I have it right here in front of me. So on page three.
Three of 14.
Right.
All the item under investigative services are what in, are what in, or what is, is what is in that line item. It is not, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief. That's not detectives actually doing investigative services. Those are contracts that we have with a vendor that do investigative services like background investigations, pre-employment polygraphs. You'll see the list here in detail in your, in your budget binder.
Okay, and then I got a question for you. So if I'm asking that question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Shouldn't they know the answer?
I'm, I'm.
I'm just asking the question. If I'm asking it.
Right.
And you're telling me where to go, shouldn't they know the answer?
I, I'm, I'm just jumping in to try and provide that clarification. That's all.
All right. Animal control is what we're paying the county for animal control services because we don't have an in-house one.
Correct.
Let's jump up to Department 15 Emergency Services. Okay. Line 268. We're now have a replacement fleet service in place, which we haven't had for years. And then if you go down to 660, that's paying back the water sewer, the Evan enterprise fund.
Correct.
So we're, we're doing the two separate ones. So we are actually getting a, a fleet service allocation back. Thank you. And the other thing, I'm going back to the page on the other side. 123 retirement plan changes. Since we don't have any personnel, why are we doing a retirement plan in 2022, 23?
Because we still have to fund the unfunded liability with Stan Serra.
I thought that was already caught up after the first year.
No, this, it's a 16-year payment that we will be making to Stan Serra for.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, council member. Any other questions from the council? Do we have any more comments from the public now that you've heard a little bit more? You're okay? Just wanted to make sure.
If, if I might, just to.
Absolutely.
Just, just to follow up on, on Mr. Warren's comment. Actually, Travis and I, what was it? Maybe a couple of weeks ago, we're out at the, at the American Legion Hall. Just did a site walk and we were just initially talking about what could be some improvements to the facility. So the staff has been, has been at least exploring opportunities for, for improvements at the building. And we could possibly plug something into the budget based on Mr. Warren's comments and the staff review of this, of the building.
Yeah, thank you for that. Appreciate it. So now that we've had a council discussion and questions, what are the next step? Are you looking for direction or does the council have any other comments in regards to the next steps?
The next steps, we would prepare the document and bring it back for final adoption on June 13th.
So there will be another opportunity for council member Klein to receive some of the, some of the questions that he asked. You have some information, get back to him before that day comes. I want to make sure Mr. Klein's the questions are answered. And then we'll have another discussion on that day after everything's been prepared.
Right, really, the, I think the thought would be, the recommend, the thought would be that the council would potentially adopt the budget at that next meeting. We would take the comments, revise the budget, fine tune it and present the budget for council's consideration and adoption.
Okay. There will be plenty of opportunity for the council to. Now, my thing is, and to his point, could we get a copy of that presentation? Would that be something that the council would, would like? Or are you guys okay with what we have? Okay. Give us a little copy, if that'd be great. I appreciate that. Mr. Silveira, he took off? Yes, he did. Okay. Yeah, so if that is the case and this is the council's direction to have them do exactly what they just mentioned. Councilmember Klein and Casey. Are we okay with the direction? Bring it back to council? Do we have a date?
Letitia, did a date?
June, June 13th.
June 13th. That's just a regular scheduled meeting, correct?
Yeah, it'll come back at a regular scheduled council meeting.
Sounds good.
Just, just lastly, if I might, Mr. Mayor, thanks. Thank you to the, to the staff for the relift and the work on the budget. Lots of, lots of work behind the scenes occurs to put together this document and just want to recognize that, that hard work of the staff.
Thank you. And I'll say with me, I really thank everybody for bringing this all together. It's, it's a lot. And Klein had a lot, a lot of questions that even made me think a little bit. I appreciate it, Mike. I really do. Okay, with that being said, our, we will return to our next, to June 13th with the budget from the staff. The meeting is now adjourned.